Stuff I have to read, so here goes. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. This meeting will be broadcasted live through the local access channel and on the public access Facebook page and will be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. If you wish to join us via Zoom, the meeting ID is 834-4804-6684. And the agenda, the agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and those that are reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by open meeting law. And just for the record, this evening, our member Laura Kelly is participating via Zoom. Hi Laura. And is not with us this evening. So could we stand, please, to pledge the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for So next on our agenda is public comments. Our public comment protocol has been changed to make it more accessible to the public. Comments regarding any topic under the scope of authority of the school committee will be entertained during either comment session. We have moved comments to be directly after the call to order so that it is easier for people to make those comments. Please remember, comments are limited to three minutes per person and 10 minutes in total. The 10-minute total can be increased by a vote of the committee. Public comments about individual students are prohibited to protect the privacy of the student per state and federal law. So if you are on the board, we'll start with the board. If someone on the board would like to make a public comment, they're welcome to do so.
I would like to make a public comment.
Certainly.
So at the last session, we had a concerned parent who talked about SEL. And I think I've made it clear, I am not an education expert and I always try to track down the alphabet soup. And she had made some claims about SEL that as a person who is not a subject matter expert in education were concerning. And so that set off a quest for research. And after about 25 hours of reading, I have some information that makes me more confident in an assessment. But essentially, my understanding of social emotional learning is that it originated from, I believe it was Yale Medical School, a gentleman named James Cormier, who first set out the protocols for how you can incorporate people's sort of wellbeing, their state of mind, their history, their personal understanding of things into education, in particular when he noticed an achievement gap between poorer kids in the area and wealthier kids in the area. And so from there, he went on and developed protocols to help kids, you know, learn better. And part of those protocols were what he ended up calling social emotional learning. So one of the things that was brought up was the idea that there were no studies showing the effectiveness of SEL. I'm not an educator and I don't have the, I don't have the subject matter expertise to say this is why it's effective. But what I can do is I can go and find peer-reviewed empirically validated studies. And so what I did was I found 11 different studies and it was a very quick search. I used very rudimentary search tools. But the studies were both regular straightforward analyses and what are called meta-analyses where they analyze other studies. And there were multiple studies that showed short-term and long-term benefits to SEL approaches to education. In addition, there was a recent study in 2019, which I found particularly interesting because it created, it studied the empirical basis for linking social emotional learning to academic performance. In other words, not just saying how much it improved educational achievement, but the mechanisms by which SEL did so. And so I think that there is a strong scientific consensus based on empirically validated, peer-reviewed studies that show that SEL directly improves academic achievement, both in the short term and the long term. Another issue that was brought up was that SEL treats all children or childhood as being traumatic. And I think that that is probably, again, looking only at these studies and not having the expertise as an educator. I don't know if that's an appropriate categorization of what it does, but if a child does have trauma in their past, my understanding is that the models of social emotional learning that are used are, they use, they, they make that trauma something that people and educators are aware of to help facilitate the education of that child. So they basically don't ignore it. But I don't think in the studies that I showed, particularly the model that was used by a more recent group called Castle, there is no assumption that I could find that trauma was core to SEL, but that if their child has trauma, they would incorporate that in their educational approaches to the child. There was also an issue with treating teachers as therapists. I didn't need to do any empirical research for that. I could just sit here and recall all of the presentations we've had about actual therapists and counselors in school. I don't think that that is something that happens in Lunenburg. I wouldn't be able to say elsewhere, but if we have actual therapists, there's no reason for teachers to do that. Another objection that was brought up that the studies did address was whether or not SEL takes away from school subjects like reading, writing, and arithmetic. And in particular, the study on the empirically validated methods by which SEL improves learning showed that, first of all, SEL is not a, and I defer to you guys, but it doesn't appear as though SEL is like a subject. It's an approach that informs all of the subjects. But it also showed that there were real measurable improvements for uptake in the classic school subjects when an SEL approach is taken. And so the idea that it's taking away time is in fact the opposite of what empirically validated, peer-reviewed, published studies have shown. Another issue that was brought up is that SEL is some form of indoctrination. I think, you know, we've had issues in Western culture with teachers and education being the central part of our identity, from Plato's Republic to Jesus to where we are now. And education is in some way always a form of indoctrination, in the sense that, you know, like, we teach people how to do anything in a society. In particular, in the recent cheerleader case, Mahai Area Schools District versus BL, the Justice Breyer noted that schools serve a critical role in educating children about civic virtues because they are the nurseries of democracy. And so to a certain extent, any form of education is indoctrination. But I think that the point that was being made was that it indoctrinates somebody into a certain political point of view. And I just couldn't find, again, with the caveat that I am not a subject matter expert, I could not find anything that indicated that SEL was in any way endorsing one political ideology over another. Cormier's point at the beginning of incorporating SEL into education was he wanted to close the achievement gap between disadvantaged kids and those that weren't. And I don't think that that's a political goal or aspiration. There was also this message about SEL being unnecessary for some kids because of how they were raised. And I don't, I don't know how to evaluate that. I don't, I don't think that that's something that is capable of evaluation. But I would say that, you know, well-raised children are always assets for every school, every teacher, and every classroom. And having education about how to be a better person isn't something that starts or stops at the schoolroom door. And having more education about how to be a better person doesn't seem to be a bad thing. I, I did my very best to find some evidence that the issues that were raised about SEL were based on something that I could evaluate. And, you know, without, without the years of experience in education that the teachers and the administrators in the school district have, I was relying on sort of the echoes of that borne out by these empirically validated, peer-reviewed studies. And I simply couldn't find anything. The one thing that I did find that was somewhat concerning is that there was an article published by a neighbor, a gentleman named Robert Pondisio, who was a researcher at the American Enterprise Institute. And he laid out every single one of these criticisms about SEL in an article that was published on their website. But that article, unlike the empirically validated, peer-reviewed studies that were published, had no citations. It did not use data. It did not use the scientific method. It was an opinion piece. And so my concern is that there is somehow a confusion between somebody's opinion about SEL and the data borne out by, at this point, decades of using SEL as an approach to education. And I think that every one of the concerns that were brought up were valid. Every one of the concerns that were brought up were something that was important. But I can't tell you, 25 hours is probably a conservative estimate of how much time I've spent researching these, and I just can't find evidence to support it. I also think that it's incredibly important as a school board to show that we support the teachers' teaching as they do. They are the subject matter experts. And if they tell me that SEL improves academic achievement, and that's borne out by scientific research, then I think the idea that SEL should be optional or should be taken out of the curriculum is something I can't support.
Thank you.
Could I make a comment?
I was going to say, any other public comments? So if you have a public comment, Mr. Beardmore, you may make one.
So first of all, Mrs. Goulbrini, thank you very much for your work and your explanation that you just went through. I learned quite a bit just in the last few minutes, listening to you. I also requested some information from the superintendent last week pertaining to SEL and also did a little bit of my own research, though not as extensive as your own. And I looked at the Trails to Wellness scope and sequence that kind of guides how our schools approach SEL at different, at different levels. And my own personal observation was that, you know, I think I was pretty well-raised as a, as a kid in the Lunenburg schools. I think I'm a, you know, decent contributing member of society. I've got my strengths and weaknesses. I recall as a kid, at one point, there was a class on critical thinking. And I thought it was really helpful and probably formative to me in terms of how I approach things. And I think that, you know, there was some, a little bit of emotional wellness maybe in health classes when I was growing up. But as I look at things like mindfulness and understanding emotions and thoughts and unhelpful thoughts and, and getting active in relaxation techniques and empathy and diversity and establishing relationships and clear communication and maintaining relationships and problem-solving and those types of topics, you know, I, I think my parents did a pretty good job, but you know, but now as a parent, I recognize that they had their blind spots and boy, I certainly have my blind spots. And, and I really believe that, you know, approaching this as a holistic program that can potentially fill in some of the gaps that I may make, or maybe even cause my children to ask the right question and draw from some of my life experiences to help inform them. But if they didn't know the question to ask, those questions may never get asked, I think would be very helpful in our mission to helping, to contribute to our children being productive members of society and lifelong learners and, and that sort of thing. And so that was just, you know, a very personal response that I kind of gathered, admittedly, as I said two weeks ago, really not knowing anything about this. And, and so that's where, where I kind of am on it. I'm appreciative of the work that's been done. And I used to work with a guy who'd say, "I'll keep an, I'll keep an open mind, but I won't change it." I feel pretty good about my position, but I'll always keep an open mind. And if somebody wants to bring substantiated research or, you know, cited, you know, opinions that are backed up by evidence, I'm more than happy to listen to it as well.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else with a public comment this evening? If you are on Zoom, you can raise your hand. I'm not seeing anybody? So then we will continue. The Chair's report first. We have submitted a request to the town for the use of ARPA funds for sidewalks near our schools. I'd like to thank Mr. Jeffries, Chair of the Select Board, Mr. Bernard, the DPW Director, Mr. Pusatary, did I say that right, I hope? All right, good. Our facilities director, Mr. Serapis, and I'm sure I didn't say that right, I never do, from the Ledger, and Officer Russell for joining the superintendent and I for a walk around the elementary and middle high schools. After touring and discussing what we saw there, a decision was made to request a sum of $102,000 from ARPA funds for sidewalks on part of Northfield Road, Turkey Hill Road, and from Marshall Pond to Marshall Park. The Select Board has had more requests than there are funds, so they will have to decide how to prioritize the funding. I wish them luck. I'm glad that is not my job. But I appreciate the time and effort people put in and Mr. Bernard for helping me to figure out about how much the sidewalks would cost, as I am no expert on sidewalks either. I have a brief statement to make also about social emotional learning. It is not unusual for me to comment in my Chair's report on a comment made the week, the meeting prior, as often I like to take a look and do a little research and figure out exactly what I'd like to say. So I'd like to clarify what we're talking about when we use that term. Mitchell Chester, who is the former Massachusetts Commissioner of Education, defines social emotional learning as the process through which children and adults acquire and effectively apply the knowledge, attitudes, and skills necessary to understand and manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain positive relationships, and make responsible decisions. The Lunenburg, Lunenburg uses Trails to Wellness Curriculum, which follows that definition. There are five, five broad categories in the curriculum, which is self-management, self-awareness, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. I'm not going to go through all that because I think that our previous commenters have gone through quite a bit of it. But I would say that if anyone has further questions regarding SEL in our schools, they should contact Mrs. Annika Scott, who is the Director of Teaching and Learning, and she can help you with any questions you may have about this curriculum. So we're moving on to review and approve line item, nope, not line item transfers, I jumped. Review and approve minutes from the regular session, Janu-, oh my goodness, July 5th, 2022. I got that part right. So were there any questions about the minutes?
No.
No? Not seeing any? Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'd like a motion to approve the minutes.
And a second, please?
I was not a member.
This is Laura Kelly, I'll second that.
Thank you. So we need a roll call vote to approve those?
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Goulbrini?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
I'm staying.
And Mrs. Arshambo?
Yes. So thank you, that's taken care of. We do not have any line item transfers this evening. So we are on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to follow up on the grant opportunity that I referenced at the last meeting, a grant from Mass DOT. Our facility director and DPW director for town attended an informational webinar on October 3rd. We learned that to qualify for the grant, improvements must include the following. They must be ADA compliant. They must have sidewalks on both sides of the street. Must have bike lanes on both sides of the street. And the sidewalk cannot be considered a bike lane. Mass DOT requires 12 feet for each sidewalk bike lane. Eight feet is allowed only in the case of a pinch point. So it looks with all of these requirements as though this grant is a funding source for sidewalks in and around the area that we explored is not looking as a viable option for funding, unfortunately.
Unless you have the width of Route 2.
Next, I would like to offer congratulations to Mr. Will Guerra. He's a middle school science teacher. He was a semifinalist for the 2023 Massachusetts Teacher of the Year. There were 39 nominations, which were reviewed by DESI, the Teacher Collaborative, and the Teachers Lounge. And the list was narrowed to 12 semifinalists, Mr. Guerra being one. As a semifinalist, he was invited to attend the September 29th STEM Day at Fenway Park, followed by a game. He brought along 15 students of our middle school science Olympiad team. The students got to drop an egg drop device from the green monster. That, that's like, that's a life event right there. They also got to participate in a paper airplane contest. And also hear from meteorologist Kevin Lemanowicz. The teachers also participated in the paper airplane contest and our own, Mr. Guerra, won the paper airplane contest. And he received a prize of two real plane tickets for a trip.
Wow, that's wonderful.
So congratulations on the prize, but also congratulations for being a semifinalist in a really competitive crop of, of very fine teachers.
Wonderful.
We have a lot to be proud of for our educators in Lunenburg. Some additional staff recognition. Sunday was National Custodial Workers' Recognition Day. Today is World Teachers' Day and tomorrow is National Coaches' Day. So I want to offer great big thanks to all of our custodial and maintenance staff, our teachers, and our coaches. Some October reminders. The English Language Learner Family Engagement Meeting is going to be held tomorrow at 1:00 PM and it will be repeated at 6:00 PM. This will be an in-person meeting at Turkey Hill Elementary School. Tomorrow is also the primary school's parent Zoom meeting. A team will review the I-Ready Assessment results from the primary school, our fall benchmark. And they'll also have an opportunity to discuss the HMH Math and Literacy Curriculum that we're implementing. That will be at 6:30 PM via Zoom. I've shared the link with all the members of the school committee. You're welcome to attend to listen in. On the 10th, schools and offices are closed in observation of Columbus Day or Indigenous Peoples' Day holiday. On the 18th is the early release for Turkey Hill and Primary School for the parent-teacher conferences. The following day on the 19th, again, early release just for the middle high school for parent-teacher conferences. The 19th, we also have our next school committee meeting via Zoom at 6:30. At that meeting, we'll talk about the overview of the assessment results, our I-Ready Fall Benchmark, as well as last spring's MCAS results.
Can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
What, I, I would need to go to the 19th meeting. What should I do?
So the 19th, the early release for the parent-teacher conference?
Yes, if it's at the same time.
That would be during, during the daytime, the afternoon?
Oh, perfect, thank you.
The evening conferences for the middle high school are on the 20th.
Okay.
The evening parent conferences for Turkey Hill. And the primary school will be on the 26th.
Okay.
So you should be all set, conflict free.
I just want my wife to be able to tell my wife I asked.
So you should be all set. Let's see, on the 24th of October, we will host a parent Zoom for Turkey Hill parents to look at the MCAS results, the I-Ready Fall Benchmark, as well as a conversation around the new HMH Math and Literacy Curriculum. On the 25th of October, the parent Zoom for the middle school parents to review the MCAS and I-Ready Assessment results. Again, that will also be at 6:30. The 29th, this is the big deal. That's homecoming. Please mark your calendars for the 29th. We will have the float parade in the morning and the football game against Tingsborough at 1:00 on the turf field. Additionally, the Boys and Girls Club will be hosting their Shrieks and Creeks event that same evening. On the 30th, the Miles for Miles Cross Country Boosters are running the Miles for Miles Event as a fundraiser. And that will be in the morning, out of TCP, right in front of TCP. And also on the 30th is the Lunenburg Business Association's annual, now annual, trunk or treat event. And that will be at the entrance to LMHS from noon to 3:00. And any of these community events, you'll be able to find flyers posted on the district website under the community link. So there's a lot, a lot coming up.
October is busy.
Very busy. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So now we have our student representatives' report, and I think I saw a student representative. There she is. Leila.
Hi. So for, as the super, excuse me, as the superintendent said earlier, homecoming is on October 29th, and the classes have officially started working on our floats. And the theme is board games. NHS and Student Council members, we're going to be helping support the primary school at their STEM night as volunteering. We're just going to be helping with the kids. The parents will drop their kids off and will look after them while the parents visit STEM night. And then student morale is up again and we're all working hard and the year is off to a strong start.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for joining us.
My pleasure, thank you.
So now we are on to new business, and it would be FY23 School Improvement Plans.
So this evening, our principals are attending via Zoom, so I'll just check to be sure that they can hear me. Mr. Santry, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Mrs. Champagne? And Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Okay. So you have copies of the school improvement plans from the high school, the middle school, Turkey Hill Elementary, and the primary school. These plans have also been reviewed with each school's school advisory council, and they are also posted on our website. I think basically those documents stand for themselves, although I'll let Mr. Santry maybe have a few words to give you a bit of an overview. Mr. Santry?
Sure, thank you, Dr. Burnham. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Tim Santry, Middle High School Principal. Tonight, I have been elected to be the spokesman for all building principals, my colleagues, Heidi Champagne and Chad Adams. As Dr. Burnham alluded to, is that we try a new approach to presenting our school improvement plans. But before we begin, all of us, the principals, would like to take this opportunity to recognize our school advisory councils in the district. They have played a major part in the development of these plans. Our councils have been outstanding in terms of collaborative problem-solving, as well as advisors and soundboards on really what's best for students and what's happening in our school communities and how we can best approach those hurdles or challenges. So as principals, we've kind of been working with and refining these plans based upon the data that the data that we received. So this summer, Dr. Burnham had mentioned it in prior meetings, is that the principals participated in a week-long data summit with the central office. We reviewed the scores and the trends, benchmarks, and standardized assessments. And after those summits, we determined how we were going to tweak these plans to best align with the district strategy plan, as well as continue to meet the needs of our students. And then in September, all principals met with their school councils again in order to get their final approval on those school improvement plans. So these plans really reflect those discussions and ideas with a strong mix of what's been successful strategies, but also what the data is telling us. So we've provided you with those copies of all the school improvement plans. We're not going to read each plan to you, but we are available tonight to answer any questions you may have. If you decide to approve those plans tonight, each principal will down, will upload them onto our school website, so our community can review them. So I think we are available for any questions that the committee may have.
Does anyone have any questions for any of our principals?
I do not, other than to thank you for the work that you did and looking forward to seeing the results.
All right, I, I just had a couple of comments, not questions, but comments. I wanted to appreciate, to tell you that I did appreciate the emphasis on achievement and the careful look at the data and how that transforms into teaching the students. And each of the plans seemed to follow the same format, and I think, we talked about that last year. I think that's wonderful, when everybody's following the same idea in the same format, that works out really nicely. I also wanted to comment on the last part of each of the plans had to do with either emotional security or SEL classes, safe school environments. And I was glad to see that as a part of each of the plans. And anecdotally, Mrs. Champagne, I have to tell you, one of your, your action plans was to make the process of leaving nice and smooth in the afternoon. Well, in the process of our walking around doing the sidewalk walk, we chose to walk when the elementary school was getting let out. And I want to say you got high marks from everybody in that little group on how efficient and quick the dismissal time went. So I just wanted to let you know.
Well, Mrs. Archibald, thank you so much for that acknowledgement. I do have to give a lot of credit, though, to my assistant principal, Mr. Palumbo. He has made that his mission is that, you know, every day, he's like, okay, 3:20, 3:20, that's our goal, you know, which is a 10-minute turnaround time for buses and parents. So I'm, I'm happy that that's publicly acknowledged tonight, and I do need to give him the credit.
Well, thank you very much for that. So if there aren't any other questions, then I would ask if there is a motion to approve the school improvement plans.
I would make a motion to approve the school improvement plans.
Second.
And we have to do roll call, so we need a roll call vote?
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenbrini?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes. And we thank you very much for all the work involved.
Thank you all, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Next, we have a donation.
Yes, if I can get to that quickly. Have to move all of my school improvement plans first.
Oh.
We received a donation of a baritone musical instrument with a case for the high school music department. Mrs. Karen Wardwell, our high school music director, was very pleased to accept this donation for an interested student that may actually need this instrument in the future. We highly recommend that you accept this very generous donation with gratitude from Mr. and Mrs. Alfredson.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept this generous donation?
I'll move. I'll second.
All right, then, all, we need to roll call vote?
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenbrini?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes, and we thank them very much.
Can I just ask, what is this?
A baritone horn is bigger than, like, it's bigger than like a trumpet. It's got more tubing wrapped around, but it's not a French horn. But it's not as big as a tuba. So it's sort of in between.
Okay.
It's got, it plays essentially very closely the same sound as a trombone, but it's twisted more.
That's cool. That is awesome.
That's not a very technical description.
Way better than I, I had no idea.
Well, my daughter started on trombone and switched to baritone, so, but that was 30 years ago, so, you know.
I just, if I could just make a quick comment on this, I'm reminded of a few years ago when Mr. and Mrs. Starr made a donation of some equipment for our gym in the middle high school. And Sabrina Starr was a classmate of mine. My younger sisters and brother were underclassmen when I was in high school. And Lisa Alfredson was a year ahead of me, and Anna Alfredson was a few years behind me. So it's, it's really great to see, you know, some of these names resurface with donations and involvement in our schools, you know, generation later, but, you know, clearly people that are still plugged in and appreciative of, of the contributions that the Lunenburg schools have made to their families. So I'm very appreciative.
Great. Thank you. All right, now we're on to the PTO use of school logo.
So the PTO has put forth a request. They would like to sell t-shirts and sweatshirts with the Lunenburg Blue Knights logo on them to show town and school pride and raise money to support the schools. In particular, they want to be able to offer gear across all grade levels. They often find, and it's so true, that the younger students in the district don't often have an opportunity to have Lunenburg Blue Knights gear. So this apparel would be available for purchase. They are anticipating that the pricing would be approximately $15 for a t-shirt and $25 for a sweatshirt.
Any questions from anyone regarding this request?
And I do believe that we have Mandy Gilman on this evening. Do you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'm just grateful for the support, and my kids want some Lunenburg gear, so I figured we'd try to get it for everyone in their age level. Get some money for the PTLO or add it.
I think the adults would like some, too.
Excellent, excellent. Well, I will send you the link once we get approval.
Awesome.
Look, this is Laura talking, but it's funny because Mr. Adams just sent something. I was talking to Mandy about this, about how it's going to be Lunenburg gear there on Friday. And I was like, oh, my gosh, my kid's up nothing other than what they wear to sports. So this is such a great idea, especially for the little kids to get on board with supporting Lunenburg and have their sweatshirts and, very good idea, Mandy. Thank you.
Great.
Can I just ask a question? I'm very inclined to support this. I think it's great. I just, I have two questions. The first is, obviously, this predates my membership in the school committee, but I do recall that we went through a process of standardizing the Blue Knight logo and that sort of thing. Do we have any sort of copyright or anything on that logo that we would ever assert, or how does that, how does that work?
I'd have to verify that. Karen Giuliani, who's our teacher at the middle high school, is sort of the keeper of the official logo. I don't, I don't know that we have any copyright trademark type rights to it, but we have an attorney here at the table. I, I can certainly check to see if we've explored that.
I just want to say, while doing a little research for this, there are people out there selling Lunenburg Blue Knights stuff that doesn't have our official logo on it and is not benefiting the schools at all. So that's part of the reason. So, you know, we did get a copy of the logo. We used it last year on some other gear that we sold. So that's why I do want to advertise it as official, I, I wouldn't say trademark, but official, you know, our official logo.
Okay. And then the other?
Don't mind my four-year-old behind me.
Need to get a Blue Knights sweatshirt for that kid.
I know, right?
So my other question is, how, how will these be, will these be just primary and elementary school, or will these be marketed at all levels? And the, the reason for my question is, is that the sports booster programs do sell Blue Knights gear. The, I've bought stuff from the track boosters as well as the football boost, I bought stuff from the football boosters literally last Friday. So, and, and that is a meaningful revenue stream for those booster clubs. I'm really excited to see more kids wearing Blue Knights stuff, but I just want to make sure that we're not competing against those revenue streams.
I could be wrong, but usually when the boosters sell, as an example, if it's the football, they usually have Blue Knights football.
Oh, they do.
Right? I think what they're talking about for PTO is just generic Blue Knights. So I, I would think that most of our athletes would tend to, and their families, would tend to purchase the sports-related for their, for their student athlete. But I think, you know, we have lots of kiddos, well, I won't say lots, about half of our kiddos don't play a sport. They might be involved with band or other things, but they don't have a particular affiliation with one, one sport. So potentially having some generic Blue Knights apparel would be beneficial for, for those kids that don't have a specific sport affiliation.
Again, I, I just, I'm, I'm going to, what, you know, I'm, I'm supportive of this. I just, I'm a little bit concerned that we, I just don't want to interrupt the, because those booster clubs.
Absolutely.
Do depend on, you know, they, they plan and depend upon that revenue. The, the musicators sell Blue Knights band stuff, too, for that matter. So I'm just, want to be a little bit cautious.
Can I just comment that I think, you know, the PTO, we are a small but mighty group. They're trying to grow, and we do support all four schools, even though generally, most of the parents that are involved are of the younger set, just because, you know, parents who get older, who have older kids are involved more regularly in their booster clubs and stuff. So, you know, I, I, you know, we want to sell across, obviously, we want to make some money, so we want to sell as many, you know, products as possible. But I do think, you know, I, the reason we are doing it is because, you know, we want our younger kids to have access to stuff as well.
So I just, three quick comments. Number one, as the school council, school committee representative to PTO, I saw the mockups. It's just Blue Knights. It does not specify. Number two, one thing that the PTO brought up that I thought was interesting, that I had never conceived of, is that the participation in the PTO and the generic Lunenburg Knights stuff appeals to the younger kids, because like, my kid is in second grade, he can't play on any sports. So I think that the concern that it would, you know, eat up revenue from competing these, that might apply at the older kids, but I think that they'd probably just opt in for the, the booster specific thing. As far as trademarks concerned, you, in order to have a trademark, you don't have to register it, but registering the trademark will protect it. So we, I, not rendering a legal opinion, but my guess is that there's been sufficient use of the logo to make it something that we could trademark, but if we wanted to protect it, having somebody register it would be ideal, and I think that that would make it more official. And it might be like a little money now, but useful later. So I don't know if that's something that we would want to do, but if we did, I don't think it would be terribly difficult. And I know that there is an attorney in town who does this kind of work.
I might know who you're talking about.
That's something we definitely can explore.
Yes.
So the, the point around, so the, the other point that, that she made around others selling it, I, I would be interested in, in hearing, like, for example, I don't think we, there are other Blue Knights organizations around, right? Lunenburg does not have a corner on Blue Knights, but we would have a corner on Lunenburg Blue Knights. And I do think that that's something that may be worth looking into protecting, because you're absolutely right. Just type it in Google, and you're going to see others selling through online stores and this, that, and the other thing. And it may be something that we may want to protect at some point.
Okay, so if there is no more conversation, I would need a motion to approve the PTO's request for selling Lunenburg gear.
I'll move, make the motion.
Second.
And then a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Schoen, Mr. Schoenbrini?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Archambeau?
Yes. All right. So now we're on to old business, and we have FY24 capital plan.
So our facility director, Mr. Pusiteri, is here this evening. Mr. Cassidy, our business manager, is also here this evening. We provided you basically a 10-year look at potential capital projects at the last meeting, and gave an overview, and presented what, what we felt might be our prioritization of those items. I don't know if, if anybody has any specific questions. Mr. Cassidy, Mr. Pusiteri, if you want to offer any comments relative to our continued dialogue around items on the capital plan?
Good evening, everyone. My Cassidy, business manager. I'm just going to share this. Good.
I think he's trying to squeeze.
Can I share? Can you share? This spreadsheet is in the school committee folder. This is more for the public to see.
You should be all set.
Thank you. So in front of you tonight, there is action. I know, that's pretty, that, that's not the greatest, but I'm sure the public can see that, if, if they do have a screen.
Could you grab a screen?
So in front of you tonight is the action by the school committee as we move forward, submitting an application to the town for our capital improvements. Here's the long-term budget. We are seeking funds for security upgrades at Turkey Hill and the Lunenburg Primary School. Safety, safety window films installed in all schools. Exterior door replacement at Turkey Hill Elementary School. Upgrade on the fire alarm system at Turkey Hill. And also a pickup truck with a plow and a sander district-wide. And finally, the upgrade of turf field walls drainage, which really is a feasibility study. There's no new construction in that project. I saved that one for last. It seems like that, that drew a lot of attention by the public and the school committee last week. And it, we had budget of $50,000 for the feasibility study. There's $150,000 for plans of specification and $2 million for construction. I'm going to, I'm going to ask the school committee and the public not to be frightened by those numbers. We're, we're trying to get professionals in to take a look at some of the challenges that we have out in that, that complex. It's going to help the, the school committee is going to help administration project and plan using, using capital funds in the future. I guess if I could have done it over, I would have spread it out a bit, but we don't know. But it's, and it's not even a commitment by the school committee to fund that either.
Sorry.
So, but we do have some challenges out there that are not going to go away, and we're just, we just want to be clear and have the information moving forward. So that was?
Yeah, and I just want to be clear that that $2 million figure is not based in anything concrete that we have in hand in terms of an estimate from a professional. It really and truly is a guesstimate, and it really will depend on the complexity and if remedying. if remedying one situation then creates a ripple impact, it impacts a different situation, that things need to be done in tandem. Might be a very simplistic fix that isn't this involved, but until we have professionals come in and make their assessment, we really don't know what that figure really is. And there's, there's no, there's nothing definitive that says that all of the remedies to challenges out in the athletic complex will have to be done in one year with a large investment at one time. But we don't know yet how we might be able to parse those things out over multiple years, and what the price tag attached to each of those years might be. Once we have professionals come in and do this assessment, we would have a better sense of, can it be done in phases? How many years can we do this phased approach? And what might the price tag be attached to each of the years in a phased approach? We simply don't have the expertise or any concrete knowledge to give you a really valid number to put there. We just suspect that potentially, it could be costly.
And if I may add to the superintendent's comment, we don't know what the priority is either.
What to fix first versus?
We've talked about multiple things in this project, I'm not really sure what needs to be done first.
Right, we, I know, Mrs. Archambeau, you've been out to the turf field, the bleacher area earlier this week, Mr. Beardmore joined us for a little walk out in that area as well. There are several things in need of repair, and they are obvious and visible to anybody who comes to the facility. The retaining wall, block wall, along the track is shifting, the fence that is mounted to that retaining wall is visibly leaning towards the track. The paver sidewalk that takes you to the bleachers, there's disruption, and it's an uneven surface there, it needs to be repaired. And if you are underneath the press box area between the two sets of bleachers, you can see that the large concrete block retaining wall that sits behind the bleachers and under the press box is also shifting slightly forward. We don't think that there's an imminent threat, that it's an immediate safety hazard, but it clearly is going to need to be addressed. It's not gonna improve itself over time, it's likely over time going to continue to deteriorate. How quickly an engineer might assess we need to address it, I don't, I don't know. But that's, that's why it's important to get somebody in here now, so that we can have a good sense of what the project involves. As we've said, we speculate that there might be some drainage challenge in the hill behind the big concrete block wall. In remedying that, do we now add to challenges with the drainage on the turf that will also then need to be involved in the project? We don't know, we don't know. We're not looking to alarm anybody. We just need to do due diligence and have experts come in and take a look and tell us how this can be approached in a cost-effective way, and what that might look like in a phased approach if possible, and what the price tag attached to multiple years of a project might look like. So, again, we don't want to cause any distress in the community, but it is something that needs to be on everybody's radar, and it is something that is going to have to be addressed at some point, and we suspect that this is not an inexpensive repair.
I know that my thought, I am 100% behind getting the feasibility study, we have to know what it is, because we don't have plans for that, we don't, we don't have any, any way of knowing what is causing this, or why it is doing, we can guess, but we don't know what it, what's going on there. My hesitation is over-putting the $2 million price tag in FY26, just because it is going to cause alarm. And I don't know, I think we need to indicate this could be big trouble, and that we may need to do something more about it. Everybody who saw this spreadsheet, heard your voice at the same time, they perhaps would not panic, but that's not gonna happen.
True, unless I pre-record and send everything out.
And send it right out, we press this button, and Kate will explain. So, so unless we do that, I, that, that number in that box is troublesome to me. Now, I don't know if we, since we don't know anyways, do we put $500,000 over four years? Or, you know, do we stretch it out on this document, so it doesn't look quite so foreboding? Because we don't know anyways, you know, so to go the route of less heart attacks may be, to me, practical. What do other people think?
I don't, so I do want to talk about some of the other items, but I suspected this one would probably suck up, yeah, suck up a little bit of oxygen, and I understand why. I understand your point entirely, Mrs. Archambeau, however, first of all, nobody is going to vote on that $2 million this year at town meeting, or at a finance committee meeting, or anything. This is, this 10-year capital plan, I think of as like, you know, akin to a weather radar. Right? And you can start from the left and look right and kind of see what's coming your way. And I think that that is the appropriate thing to do, and it leads to decision-making, such as, for example, in the fire department, they know that they're gonna have a $500,000 ambulance to buy inside of the next two years, that they're gonna have a 1.2 or 1.3 million dollar fire truck to buy inside of the next five or six years. And because of those big bites that we're gonna need to take as a town, it's not so much when we take it, it's how we spread it out, and what we do to financially prepare for it. So, for example, in the case of the ambulance and the fire truck, we basically have that money ready to go, because we've done the financial planning, we've created a special purpose stabilization account, and we're prepared for that eventuality. And I think that putting that on the radar and raising that level of alarm probably isn't the right word, but the forecast is the right thing to do to get people thinking on the capital planning committee, and at the town manager level, and at the finance committee level, like, this is something that we need to think about. Maybe this is deserving of thinking about non-excludable debt, or a special purpose stabilization account, or who knows what, right? I don't know where we land, but this is an issue that we're gonna have to deal with. And the other thing that I do want to mention, and we talked a little bit about this on our site visit the other day, you know, this facility was built largely with private funds in the early 2000s. The fundraising started, I want to say prior to 2000, and, you know, kind of got to where it needed to be right around 2006. The town kicked in, I want to say, a couple hundred thousand dollars right around that time to complete the project. But all of that occurred before Lunenburg Middle High School became a thing. And the facility was built prior to that, with the idea that the changes would occur, but there was absolutely no way to predict the way the drainage was gonna flow, or what the, how buildings were gonna settle, or how anything was gonna happen around that area. At the time, a facility like that, I would say was an above-par facility, right? That was a really cool thing to have for a public school of our size in central Massachusetts. Today, that facility is a little bit below par. You know, I was out at Air Shirley for a football game last week, they're just completing a magnificent facility that includes both a full track and field, ours is not quite as complete as theirs, it includes shot put area and that sort of thing, as well as a baseball diamond, all in one contiguous facility. As I've said, I spend a lot of time going to football games, and a turf field track complex is pretty much par for the course for a school district in our division nowadays. And so, you know, in an age of private schools and school choice and all of these other options, it's really incumbent upon us to keep our facilities at par. And I think this is an area that we're gonna just have to need to make an investment in, you know, at some point, probably to include an investment in the turf itself, which we have a nice revolving fund that we pay debt on, we debt, we pay debt service on, but, you know, we just need to think about that facility and all of our fields, but in particular, that one, it is a really nice facility even still, and to your point, it's not gonna get better if we don't take care of it. And in fact, it's probably gonna get worse. The last comment I'll make is, during varsity football games, I shoot video for the coaches, so I'm in the press box, and our students sit just to the right in the, in the stands. They've, you know, we have the marching band, and then right next to them, there's sort of a group of, you know, loud kids, they call them the dungeon, and they hang out, and they're loud and obnoxious, and exactly what you want them to be during a football game. A couple of weeks ago, there was a little confrontation that broke out right in front of that group along that fence line. And it didn't turn into anything, the police were right there, and it was, but, but it occurred to me, if a kid got pushed really hard against that fence, something bad could happen. Like, I'm not confident that that fence could really retain what it probably ought to retain even today. And so, you know, I think that there's, this may be, this may be a bigger deal than we're even making it out to be, and that's why getting this money now to do that feasibility and get some expert assessment in there is, is probably money well-spent as soon as possible.
Hey, any other comments on that?
While the assessment is pending, do we have any notices about uneven pavement or fencing? I hate to be that person.
We don't have notices, but we could certainly, we could have a conversation and figure out what to post.
Be aware of uneven pavement, cleaning fence, and then, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be that person.
Nope, that, it's a, it's a good recommendation.
Yes.
And I think it's a smart thing to post. I mean, I, I know they do, or at least what I've seen, they do a pretty good job of not leaning on the fence, although it's not posted, do not lean on the fence. So, certainly, we could, we could have a conversation and figure out, you know, what sorts of advisory signage we should put up for, for some safety.
Can I ask a question about another part of the capital?
Let's finish this part first, and then, Laura, did you have anything you wanted to contribute about?
No, no, not at this time, no, thank you, though.
And I would say that I would bow to Mr. Beardmore's financial understanding of how the town works. If he thinks that $2 million thing is okay there, and not going to cause massive heart attacks right and left, then I would, I would not argue with that either. So, now we can go on to other parts of the capital plan?
So, I was just doing like, back-of-the-napkins calculations on the part of the budget for Turkey Hill. It looks like we're spending $15 million in the next 10 years.
Pretty close, yep.
I, I'm just like, that's a lot of money, especially if it's not a facility, like Mr. Beardmore pointed out, where spending money could get us back to like, state-of-the-art or, you know, above par. I, I think that whatever capital planning the school committee undertakes, because of how much money we're planning on investing in Turkey Hill, we need to have that decision. Otherwise, there's this huge part of the budget that is undecided, and if, if there's some contraction economically, we would sort of be caught flat-footed. So, I think that, you know, while the feasibility study for the field is great, if the Turkey Hill issue is not answered, you know, it's like planning a household budget without knowing how much your mortgage is. I mean, it's so much money, and it's not like, there's any way to spread it out anymore. I mean, you did, you guys did a very good job of spreading it out to the extent you could, and it's still 15 or 16 million dollars. I mean, that's like a, a heart attack amount of money. I mean, if $2 million gives people some agita, $15 million is gonna give people a heart attack. And I, I just think that, you know, we've sort of, since I've been on school committee, we've talked about what's gonna happen with Turkey Hill, I think we probably gotta decide that. Either replace it, or renovate it, or, you know, keep doing these patches as we are, and it might be helpful to have, sorry.
Mr. Pusiteri.
Mr. Pusiteri, to like, give us some idea, not tonight, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but like, get some thinking about this, because having the largest part of the expenses being a variable makes me super nervous.
So, I, I think in the big picture of things, these items have been part of the out-years of the capital plan, really, they were already in the capital plan when I arrived here in 2018. And I think it's more about having it on the radar, and having it be about transparency, right? Like, these are major systems that would need to be upgraded, replaced at some point in a very aging building. And it, you know, I think it's more for, again, the transparency for taxpayers, if the choice is to do piecemeal projects that are going to be in the ballpark of the $15 million, shouldn't we really be thinking about the investment for a new building? Or a project that takes on renovation of all systems and upgrade to the building at one time, whether it's a new build or a rental, versus tackling one system replacement after another with a hefty price tag attached to it, and just honestly, disruption to the day-to-day operation, because the likelihood that we could do all of these sort of systemic upgrades, one at a time, and one at a time over 10 weeks in the summer, so that we can have use of the facility as a school, that, that's a pretty tall order. So, I think going back a handful of years, it's been the approach that we're putting this in the plan, so that you see that these would be the price tags attached to system upgrades in this building. Do we really want to invest that kind of money in piecemeal system upgrades? Or do we want to invest a little bit more money in really overhauling the entire building? Or building a new building, and then knocking that one down when kids can occupy the new building? So, I mean, there are a lot of, there are a lot of considerations, and, you know, one of the challenges we've had in recent years, and Mr. Beardmore, you can speak to this as well, because you've been part of the building committee in town, there are a lot of moving parts, there are a lot of unknowns, and the committee's been working over the last handful of years, trying to come up with a plan for what, what would we do? Do we build a new town hall facility? Do we renovate TCP and move all town offices to TCP? Then what do we do with the Ritter Building if town offices vacate? What do we do with town hall if town offices vacate? And, you know, it's been an ongoing conversation, honestly. And, you know, it's been an ongoing conversation, honestly, for the entire time I've been here in district. It's complex and Turkey Hill is sort of like a satellite around that whole conversation. You know, what to do, what to do first, is it a plan that makes sense, all of the what ifs? So it has been part of an ongoing conversation. I think anybody who's been paying attention to our capital plan over the last many years, everybody knows that, hey, there's some big price tags to big repairs for system replacement that are down the road. Do we wanna spend the money in that way or do we wanna make a larger investment in a new facility?
Let me jump in for just a minute, because I've had some discussions with the chair of the select board about this. And he is quite confident that they are going to come up with a plan, and actually, he's coming to talk to us on the 19th, that they are gonna come up with a plan that involves the Ritter and the Passios and the chess pieces that need to be put into place in order for us to talk about seriously a new building. They can't do both things at the same time, correct, Mr. Beardmore?
I don't think it would be feasible financially.
Yeah, to say that. So basically, my opinion is, we keep our place in the queue. Should the queue get too long, then we start making noise and say, you know, alright, there's this $500,000 for a roof, do you really wanna do that, you know, and work that way? Because I honestly feel that we will do better in the long run by supporting what the town is trying to do right now and then taking our place in line when that dust is settled. But we can't wait 10 years. That can't happen because something is gonna break. And if something breaks that can't be replaced...
Fire alarms and stuff.
Well, but they can fix that. But I mean, like the example that Mr. Laundah used to like to use was the HVAC system. Because he would say, they don't make those parts anymore. You know, if something catastrophic like that would happen, then we have to yell and scream and say, priority here, priority here, but to... He said, the select board chair said, give me a couple of years. That's what I was...
So...
What do you think?
So I generally agree with what you've just described. And I think that the town manager, the finance director and the select board are all... And the town manager, the finance director and the finance committee are all very much in line with the calculus of the roof, the windows, the HVAC, the all the things in Turkey Hill that may or may not come to fruition as individual projects relative to a major renovation or replacement of that school. Like, I think everybody kinda gets that yin and yang, right? But as we get closer and closer, as we move further right on that spreadsheet, these things become a bigger threat and something that we're going to need more definition and direction when it comes to what are we going to do, right? There was a phrase that was kicked around in town for a few years before the last TCP renovation project that was used by a previous select board chair, we would call it the Plan of Record. And the Plan of Record kinda got, at least got, it never came to fruition, but it at least got the conversation moving in the direction, I would say, contributing to where we are even today with the municipal building committee and getting to the point where we, yes, we absolutely have to deal with our municipal office space and our school administration office space and like, and we need a plan and we're gonna do it, right? So like, that's happening. The question that I have is, what's the price tag and is there enough money left over for a Turkey Hill project? And I think that that question remains unanswered. There has been some financial analysis that's been done in the last couple of weeks from the town's financial consultants. I haven't opened the spreadsheet, but I did receive it, because I'm still on the finance committee mailing list perhaps, but I have it. But yeah, but, and I think that the finance committee will be discussing it at their next meeting. But my reason for bringing it up is that I think your instincts are correct, Mrs. Archambault, in terms of the way things need to happen is we need to deal with the municipal building thing first and then deal with Turkey Hill. The question is, if that price tag is too high and it becomes obvious that we have a prohibitive issue with Turkey Hill when it comes to debt capacity and that sort of thing, the school department, the school committee really needs to be ready to say, we had a problem here. And in my opinion, and the superintendent and I and Mr. Pusiteri discussed this earlier this week, I think having a packet ready to go to the Massachusetts School Building Administration, you know, we have a packet ready to go. Like, we can, you know, it is within our capacity to submit a packet and say, we wanna go and build a new school or renovate the old school or whatever. And at least being able to articulate our own Plan of Record so that we can ensure that this debt capacity is there when we need it. And so I'm not, I don't wanna be misquoted, I'm not advocating for putting that forth today or tomorrow, but I do think that inside of the next year, we need to lean into this quite a bit further than we've leaned in previously. Because if we don't, we may be doing, maybe not even ourselves, with the next school committee, some disservice when that time comes.
Does that, I mean, I'm just fascinated to listen to you guys talk. So did what he said make sense? I mean, I don't know.
Yes.
Thanks.
I'm just gonna be really candid. It sounded good to me, but I don't really care.
No, well, his point is to get things ready to go so that if the building collapses, we can say to the town, we're ready to go and we need to go now.
Or we're going forward with a project that is going to put you in a position where you can't do the project that you need to do, we can say, we're going and we can fight it out later on, right? So it's, there's a political aspect to this that I think we need to... I'm not saying we need to be confrontational about it, but we need to be ready.
I think we should get the stuff ready, but I honestly think unless we see something breaking down, that we see how the dust settles. And they want this dust settled for spring town meeting. So I think we can not put anything forward till spring town meeting and give them time to figure out what they're doing.
That seems ambitious, spring town.
Yes, but they've sent around the plans and I think they have good thoughts. And if they can get people to agree on stuff, so stuff actually gets done...
It would be in engineering and design. You know.
Oh, yeah, they have a plan for spring town meeting, not the stuff for spring town.
It's not gonna break ground.
But have a plan, a plan to bring to people for that time, is my understanding of what the goal is. And if they bring a plan to people, then we have a timeline of some time. And then we can say, okay, we've got our stuff ready. When your timeline is ready to go, we're ready to go.
Got it.
Is what my thought is. I... Do you think we have enough time for the building? To hold the building together in our discussion, we think, with our fingers crossed?
Yes, we have enough time, but it's, you know, to the point where, how long are we gonna wait? To put a plan together? And, you know, the $15 million over the course of eight, 10...
Yeah, we don't.
Yeah, and then it's, it doesn't address all the issues with the building. Because once you, mechanical systems, plumbing systems, electrical systems, HVAC, roof, you know, no one's touched the outside brick facade of the building, which is now gonna be. So it just kinda snowballs.
And like, what would happen if in one of these repairs, they discover like friable asbestos? I mean, then like the building has to be, I mean, that's something that would ever happen, but that would really change everybody's timetable.
Well, they have gone through areas of the building and removed asbestos. It's only friable when you start cutting into it. If you leave it alone, it doesn't hurt anybody.
Yeah, so we did walk through it this week and we didn't do the whole building. We didn't go into the gymnasium and that kinda thing, but we did, you know, the core of the building. And, you know, I was commenting, like, both of my kids went there and I'd go to, you know, parent teacher conferences or whatever there. But I didn't really take a hard eye. I wasn't on the school committee at the time, I wasn't really thinking about it at that time. But I went there in the 80s and, you know, spent a substantial amount of time as a kid in that building.
Like, you went to that school?
Yeah, yeah. And I gotta tell you, the building is in much better visual condition. You know, it's, you can't really start removing bricks or taking apart radiators, that kinda thing. But visually, the building is in much better condition than what TCP was when the school department...
Oh, yeah.
Moved out of TCP. Like, it, the, it's in, it's a functional building, you know what I mean? It's not, it's not the kinda, like, I mean, TCP was literally a leaking sieve when, you know, when we moved most of the classroom.
Still is.
Still is, right. But we're not educating 4th graders in there anymore for the most part.
No, we just have water features in the office.
Right, water features, right, it's a feature. So and my point is, is that, you know, I think that this is something that we absolutely have to deal with, right? But I, but it's, I don't feel, my, no, my kid is in middle school, so we don't have a kid there anymore, but I have no problem with Lunenburg kids in Turkey Hill Elementary School today. I think it's a good school, it's adequate for our needs, it's gonna get us through this year and next year and the year after, it's not gonna get us through the decade. You know, on the track that it's on, and that's what we need to be thinking about.
Do you share that same opinion, don't get us through the decade?
Not without spending the type of money that's been forecasted in the budget.
Is what it is, I, you know, and...
This town collects buildings.
They do, they have a collection and they're trying to deal with the collection. So we'll let them deal with the collection and see where it goes.
The municipal building committee is doing a good job, like, they're really...
They're doing a very good job and they're trying to think outside the box. And they're trying to use the space that, in the best way possible, so I give them a lot of credit. I've listened to a few meetings and I'm glad it's not me.
Without overly belaboring the capital plan, I do wanna point out that, you know, we are also looking at spending a lot of money on priorities one, two, three. And I don't wanna go too deep into any of them, but, you know, I did spend quite a bit of time earlier this week talking about all of them and onsite and these all relate to security. I think we can safely say that. And I could not endorse this prioritization enough. I think it is absolutely the right prioritization, given what's happening in the world and our responsibility to our kids, safety first. This is absolutely the right thing to be doing. And I won't go into more detail, but I think these are things that we gotta do.
I just wanna say, I also agree. I think that the very real concerns that people have, the parents have, you know, like, my son got sick, I'm not gonna reveal any privileged or private information, my son got sick on the bus on Friday and I had a heart attack, because I didn't know if he was okay. Like, I got a call and I could see that it was the school, but I didn't have reception. So I called back and I was just like, what happened, what's going on? She's like, he's fine, he just got sick on the bus. But like, there was like five minutes where I was like, I have no idea what happened. I was in the, you know, on my way to work and it was just like, this is not acceptable. This has gotta be our number one priority. Anybody, I don't wanna say this because it's supposed to be like a diplomatic thing, but anybody that disagrees with prioritizing the safety of the kids at school, I just can't see how that's a reasonable position. It's gotta be done.
Mrs. Kelly, any thoughts on this?
No, unfortunately, I'm just gonna echo what they just said. It's, this is the priority of the world we live in and ultimately, the safety of the kids has to come first. So this has to be the priority. As much as people may not want that to be, this is just the reality of the world we live in.
Hey, I would agree as well. I have no problem with what's on the plan.
I do just have one additional question or request for clarification, because it's not written on what's on the screen and I'm going back. I just wanna point out that for the pickup truck that is on here, this includes a plow and sander with the pickup truck, which right now, I believe we're dependent on the town's help for sanding and our truck and plows are getting old, so... But the sanding element to this is important for us to be able to run independently.
Absolutely. So are there any other comments about the capital plan? Seeing that, do I have a motion to approve the capital plan?
So moved.
A second please?
A second.
And a roll call vote?
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Schoolenbrini?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Archambault?
Yes. And I thank you very much for all the work that went into this.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you both.
Have a good night.
You too.
You too.
Good morning.
Now we're moving on to FY23, the superintendent's goals.
So the draft version of the goal that you have in the packet this evening is also posted on the website for people to be able to view. It's slightly modified from the last version, the last draft version. For a couple of reasons, in a conversation with Mr. Beardmore, he was looking for some sort of metric. We went back and took a look at questions in previous surveys to see if there was any sort of data that we might be able to use as a baseline of sorts. We did go back and find that in the Title I survey that was administered in the late spring, that there was a question relative to parent engagement and another opportunity and another question to provide some input. And I'll share that with you all in a moment. Additionally, I attended a webinar that the state was offering on their Family School Partnership Initiative earlier in the week. It's something akin to the teacher diversification work that we did with the state last year. We attended many meetings, we had a district team and we walked through, you know, a process to think about diversifying our workforce, et cetera. There was a lot of equity conversation in that, in that process as well. As you know, we are part of the SEL Academy, this will be year two of three. We're part of the Literacy Academy, again, this is year two of three. Last year, we participated in that one year experience with DESI on the high quality math materials group. And this year, we're into year one of the Universal Design for Learning Academy with DESI. This family partnership initiative would be a short term thing, like the math group or the teacher diversification group. This would run from November to June. We would have to apply to be part of this program with the Department of Ed. But essentially, in participating in that webinar, they are going to walk through a process with all participating districts, something akin to what I had mapped out. The difference is that we won't have to sort of pull the pieces out of that very lofty document that you remember. that you remember. They already have created their own district self-assessment tool for family engagement. So, that would be part of the process that we would engage in if we were part of that program with the department. And essentially, their, their map out is to get to June and have districts, having gone through this process, identify priorities that they wanna work on for family engagement. And communication is a critical component of the work that we will do in this process with the department. So, I do think this is something we, we should do, that we should prioritize this work. It's work I want to do. I think it's smart for us to do this work with Desi's guidance. They have contracted consultants to lead this initiative for the Department of Ed. So, we would have the benefit of, um, some guidance, some professional development through the course of the meetings that we would attend if we were part of this, um, this program. Like I said, essentially, it, it's along the same timeline and timetable I had mapped out, but with the benefit of, of using documents for a process that Desi has already articulated in consultation with experts in this field. The, there's no guarantee that we'll be accepted in. But I've already started, um, recruiting folks to be part of our team. And when we look at the team that, and again, this will be the team in my mind, whether we're accepted into the Desi program or not. Special education would be represented by our, um, Director of, um, Student, uh, Special Services. Curriculum would be represented by our Director of Teaching and Learning on this team. Our English Language Learner Coordinator, um, would also be a member of the team. I have reached out to the PTO and there's a parent who's, you know, ready to be part of the team as well. Building administrators would be part of the team. I had a conversation today with district leadership. I'd like to involve our Director of, um, Community School Program because that's the entry level for getting that family engagement, even before they start school officially. Had a conversation with, um, food service, it might make sense to involve them. Athletics, again, because there's a lot of family engagement through athletics. And our nursing, uh, and guidance departments, right? So, I think that, you know, whether we are accepted into the program with Desi or not, we would have a pretty comprehensive, um, well-rounded team to start engaging in this work. Whether we are accepted or not, I think I should be able to get access to some of the documents that they use for the districts that are a part of this process. So, basically, I mean, we could attempt to replicate the process if we had to do it on our own with the tools that Desi has available. We do know that, you know, through the survey and through just school committee meetings, you know, comment offered by, um, members of the school committee, we want to find a way to re-engage parents and involve them in the life of the school. But for me, really, engage in them, in the education.
This is gonna be one of those places where I say, "I don't know what this is."
It's okay.
So, uh, like you're saying, "I'm gonna take this calculus class," and I'm like, "I don't like calculus." So, what is, what, what is this?
So, basically, Desi has been working on this as a separate standalone initiative at the state level. They want schools to be working toward engaging families in the learning process, right? So, it's, there's involvement, parental involvement, and that's the volunteering in class. It's the volunteering to chaperone. It's attending the literacy night, the STEM night, volunteering for the drama performance, you know, all of that. But it's also engaging them more deeply in the education of their child. And how do you do that? And that's where the communication piece comes in. And it's all things that we talked about this summer. We had already planned to be doing this work. Up through grade eight, we will be sending home those benchmark assessments, the I-ready reports, how did your child do, growth, achievement? We are, this year for the first time, we will give you at the next school committee meeting, sort of the overview, the district overview of how, um, we performed with MCAS, the big picture of the I-ready assessment data, like we have done all of last year. But, as you heard me rattle off dates to be, you know, on the lookout for in October, we're going to do a deeper presentation of the MCAS data, the I-ready data, and have conversation about how the new curriculum, K-5 for literacy and math, address closing those, those learning gaps in school-based parent Zoom meetings. So, the whole team will be there to present for the primary school tomorrow night. It's just the I-ready data and talking about the curriculum that, that we're working with now for math and literacy. When you move up to Turkey Hill, it's the I-ready data and the curriculum questions that we can respond to, but it's also MCAS data. And then when you get up to middle school, it's MCAS data, I-ready data. We're not implementing a new curriculum, so we're not gonna address, you know, curi-, specific curriculum challenges or, or questions from parents. But we will talk about how we're looking at the curriculum to address the specific things that came up in the data, particularly the data around MCAS. And of course, then, the high school is probably the leanest of all of the presentations because it's really 10th grade and once you've, you know, kinda met that, there are tests that happen in 11th and 12th grade, for the most part, for most kids. Again, we're talking to the audience, the parents of this school, of these grades. Let us explain to you the data for these grades, how it correlates to our own benchmark assessments and how kids perform on that, and what we're doing about the data. And that is the curriculum and the interventions that we've put in place. So, in other words, if my oldest child is a second grader, I don't need to know all the MCAS stuff, my kiddo hasn't had MCAS, but I'm curious about the I-ready information and if this is a valid tool and what are you doing about it and what about this new curriculum? They'll have the opportunity for that two-way dialogue.
Okay.
We present the information, but then they can put their questions in the chat. We're responding to the questions, right? They attend, they get to ask their questions, they're getting their answers. That's the kind of two-way dialogue that we're looking to be able to increase. We can give you a two-hour presentation of all of this data at a school committee meeting, but parents are not attending and they're not asking questions, right? I think, we, we're hopeful that this is a better approach to be providing more meaningful information to a target audience and allowing them the opportunity to engage and ask the questions and have the follow-up. That said, we're also gonna be sending those reports home and that opens up the door for parents to have questions. They talk about the data at the parent-teacher conferences, right? You're opening the door to the dialogue with each parent, right? That's the goal around trying to engage parents as partners in the learning process. That said, we are also planning for a literacy night, a STEM night, a math night at the, at the lower grades. We're talking about other events like that that we can do even up at the middle school level, again, to draw parents into the school to see some of the academic-based stuff that we do, but not like to the level of like an assessment report. But it's, it's more like come in and see what we do, watch what your kids can do. So, we're, we're going after the parent involvement in the school life, as well as the parent engagement in their child's education. So, it's kind of a two-pronged goal here. And we can certainly have a follow-up survey, um, to see now whether that's... We're going to have to repeat the Title I survey for the Title I grant. But we might be able to add more targeted questions in there to see, "How have we done? We heard what you said."
Right.
"When we surveyed you last spring, we've made some adjustments. Is this working for you?" We might be able to also include a more targeted question or two and repeat the communication survey, which will be important, I think, for, for you as a committee because of your communication goal, because we did ask specific school committee-type questions on that communication survey, so we'll want to repeat that for your goal anyway. So, we, again, but I'm also cognizant of the fact that there's overload on surveys. So, if there's a way to combine the communication survey and the Title I survey into one and accomplish what we need to get for information for the Title I, while getting us some information on the communication piece too, I think, I think it would be prudent to do, to minimize the number of surveys, which is why I didn't commit specifically to what exactly the survey would be, because I do think that if there's an opportunity. The other thing I don't know, which is why it's not super specific, I don't know if the department is going to have tools
Right.
Around communication.
You don't know what you're, you don't know what you don't know yet.
I don't know what I don't know.
Right.
But they have... They, they did this last year and there were six districts that they worked with. I don't know that that's like, oh, only six districts are gonna get in. I suspect that they had fewer people applying to participate in that program last year because so many of us were participating in the SEL Academy and the Literacy Academy and the math and the, and there's only, I remember that you talked at your, uh, interview between the two boards the night that you were appointed. There's a bandwidth issue
Yeah.
For districts and it's all the same people that are part of all of these academies. So, it's possible that they can support more than six participants in this program, but I don't, I don't know how many. I, and I, I, I think that if we put forward a compelling application and we are able to convey some genuine, um, desire and enthusiasm to be part of this, that, that we, we have a good shot of, of being accepted to work with them as they guide us through this kind of work from their lens as to what they see as the important element of, of a true family-school partnership. So, I don't know if I've given you enough, um, you know, of what you were looking for.
Well, I really appreciate the explanation, um, and I appreciate the work that you've done since we last spoke on this. And I, I think that it's exciting that you've uncovered this opportunity and that, you know, I, I'm assuming, I don't know if you need an action by the school committee, but I'm assuming that you're gonna go for this and
Yeah.
If there's anything that I or we can do to help bolster that probability, you know, by all means, let's have that...
Include that in the application.
Let's have that discussion. Because I, you know, all along I've said to you, I, you know, I think that if we, if we rely purely on the expertise sitting at this table or sitting, even sitting on our staff, like, we're not experts in communication and engagement, right?
Right.
You're, you're an education professional and we're, you know, and, and, a, a, as is Carol, but, you know, then you get people like the rest of us who we're not, right? That, that just kinda bring in observations as parents and community members. But I, I, I really appreciate your response to, in particular, my request to look more deeply and, and thoughtfully into this. And I recognize the point you made around finding some kind of meaningful indicators in the Title I survey and thinking about how we can do this more broadly or whatever. And maybe there are tools that you can, you know, like, in the corporate world, you can do directed surveys where you can actually segment your audience and some people get more questions than others based on who they are and that sort of thing, right? So, maybe there are opportunities to do that. I, I, I think part of this, my expectation would be that the committee is involved in, you know, kinda looking at the questions that go into the surveys and what data points we're looking at as that becomes more clear. I, I had hoped to see something with a little bit more granularity, but as you explained it, I understand why it isn't. And I'm okay with this, but I do think that we're gonna need to make pretty regular check-ins, especially if we don't get into this program, then, okay, well, you know, what are we, what are we doing to steal materials from them or whatever, right?
Yeah.
Because I, or, or, you know, or just reach out to the instructors or curators or whomever they are. So, yeah, I'm, I'm appreciative, excited, enthusiastic. I think that that's really good directionally. One additional thought, um, in relation to all of the outreach that we're doing, is I would like us, you and the principals really, to think about, when I've got an audience, in the, in the marketing world, we say, "What else do I have to sell you?"
Yes.
Right? You know, like, it, it's, it's not a good sale until you've at least been told, "No, at the end, stop selling me stuff," right? Like that, and, and in my mind, there are always additional opportunities for participation and engagement, whatever, that people just need to know about.
Yeah.
And some of them are gonna latch on to, most of them won't, that's okay. And they don't even necessarily have to be school things. They could be Boys and Girl Scouts, they could, I'm just making stuff up off the top of my head, you know, LYSA, whatever.
Yeah.
But, you know, like, stuff that just is bringing opportunities for engagement, volunteerism, participation in the community. Because what I'm thinking about is, is, yes, you're absolutely right and your job is to educate first and foremost and engage parents in their kids' education. Completely get that. If we're gonna be successful in kinda building that pyramid that I've talked about over the last couple of meetings, we need to be engaged as a community. And the way we get that engagement as a community is, you know, more, more parents on soccer fields on Saturday mornings or whatever, right? And, and, and I think that we will have that opportunity. We just have to be very deliberate in taking advantage of those opportunities.
So, um, we've actually had some conversation around that, you know, because, again, like I said to you at the previous meeting, we're constantly taking the feedback and thinking about what people say. You know, the repetitive nature of some of the principals' emails, information carried forward multiple times. I'm approached on a regular basis, regular, like, all the time. Scouts, "Hey, can, can we get this information out?" Little League, "Can we get this information out?" The, the public library, teen programs, "Can we get this information out?" There, there's requests like that coming all of the time and absolutely, yes, we do. They often look for it to just be included in the principal's email, but to your point about scrolling through everything.
Yeah, 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 you're gonna be selective and spread it out.
We've actually had conversations about, "Is there a way to put out like, community news?" And maybe that goes out of my office with the subject line, "Community news." And then it's not taking up space in the principal's emails, right? So, we, we are constantly thinking about, "Okay, yep, that's a valid point, so how do we, how do we do that?" But still meet the needs of the different organizations in town that are trying to get message out. We do have the community link on the website, but you have to you have to know to go to the school department website and look for the community page. And if you don't have kids in school yet, you don't know that that's there and you don't know it exists, right? So, you know, trying to push that information out in a way that isn't lost in a long thread of information that's school-related. You know, so just know that we like, I think I said to you today, it's not a written goal anywhere, but it is an active daily goal to try to find ways to meet everybody's need, be more flexible in hearing the input and adapting to what we're hearing to better meet people's needs today and not, well, this is the goal for this year. I'll put it on the list for next year's goal that we'll try to make that adjustment. It's it's a daily endeavor for for us. So I just want to communicate for all of you that that that's a that's a commitment on on all of our part, because we know how critical the school department is really a critical cog in the life of the community. I would love to, and we just haven't had the opportunity yet to sit down and think about how to do this, but one of the things that I had thought about when I first got here was there are folks in the community that would love to know what's going on in the school. I don't have access to them to push this information out. So how do we approach creating a listserv that people can join so that they can get these updates that come out? So just know that that's also kind of, you know, here in in the thinking about how how do we do a better job, just keeping everybody in the know with what's going on. So, you know, I mean, there are other things like the the local cable channel. I don't know what the viewership is. I don't know what the audience is. I don't know if we're reaching our intent. It's still worth a shot. The Ledger, I don't know what the subscribership is. I don't know how many people we're reaching or what that target audience is. It's still worth a shot. We're just going to keep.
Yeah, no, and the multiple channels idea is the right thing, right? Because not everybody consumes the same media, even if you put it right in front of them.
Absolutely.
You know, like, my parents never got notices that the parents sent home because I didn't take them home, right? So, yeah, all the time, all the time. But, you know what I mean? So you have you have to be thinking around corners. And, you know, I'm hopeful that this, you know, that this DESI opportunity will enlighten us in some strategies to deal with it as well.
Because they may have some good ones. And and oftentimes, you know, it's the it's the dialogue that you have. There will be a handful of cross-district meetings. So if we are one of the districts, there will be a handful of meetings that we will be at with other districts. And you hear from other districts in breakout rooms and so on, well, what are you doing? How do you approach that? And sometimes you hear something that somebody else is doing that you think, huh, that's genius, we should we should try that. So I do think it's a great opportunity for us to hear from the experts that DESI is working with, but also to hear from other districts who are also equally invested in this work for their district. And I I feel fairly confident that by the time we come into late spring, June, we'll have a good sense of some things we want to and need to be working on. And it may be a very targeted thing that would be a one-year targeted initiative next year that we can map out. But it might be complex, and it might be a multi-year that next year is just year one of a multi-year initiative to to work in this area.
A couple of comments. First of all, I I'm not surprised, but I am impressed that you were able to find a concrete solution to make lofty goals into practical solutions. So and you did it in two weeks. Thank you.
I don't sleep. It's all good.
The second thing is, I think that anybody that's in a public position like you are and like the principals are has a natural tension between transparency, which favors disclosure of everything, and impact, which favors concise, pointed communication. And so I think that the tension that you have is inherent in what you do. And so I'm not I I don't think that, and this is probably because we're on the school committee, but I don't think that 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 has that there's been I think that that tension, that you deal with that tension really well, and that we as a school committee try to deal with that tension really well. But I think it's something that you you don't achieve, you continue to do.
Yeah.
So like, the other, the last point that I will make is, after we had this discussion and after we had the discussion about the school bus committee, I I was like just racking my brain to think of like how we can do this better. And I remember that when I was when I was at the Public Defender, one of my mentees was from this town in California called Orinda, California, R O I'm sorry, O R I N D A. And Orinda, California, has a public school that is supported by this really intense PTO. And they founded a charitable 501(c)(3) foundation called Orinda Network for Education. And their goal is to have 100% of parents volunteering and 100% of parents donating. And in their first year, they did that, and they did it by raising $5 million. So whatever that town is doing, and by the way, I already emailed all the people on the board to see if they could, like, but I I feel like there are so many places you could take ideas from that, you know, something like that just blew me away, because I think they outraised every PTO in the country by like 2,000% or something. And the person that was my mentee happens to be a brilliant, genius-level lawyer who is, you know, a a super-nice person, and I think it was because, in large part, he was shaped by this almost unique private-public merger where the parents, I mean, the parents were told, this is what your money buys you. It buys you enrichment, teacher's aid, the, you know, like, we have a student-teacher ratio of 12 to 1 on average in the district. You have two PhDs in your in your school library. I mean, it was, it's a different thing, and I think, you know, we have a very different town than Orinda, California. I mean, I think the average property value in Orinda, California is like six times my house. But their parent engagement is something that I think is interesting, and I, you know, like, I don't know if it's something you can use, but I was just stunned at how much they had 100% parent engagement. And I, you know, like, that would be amazing.
Right.
And I think, you know, you're taking all the right steps to get there, so.
Which is why I thought it would be really important to have a member of the PTO on the team, because they had challenges a couple of years ago. They were facing having to basically dissolve the PTO because they couldn't get parents to step up and become part of the executive board. It's not so much about attending meetings, per se, but they they had nobody to come up and fill the executive board position, nobody to be the president of the PTO. And, you know, the people who are doing it just needed to step back from having that kind of demand in their own world, but there was nobody really to fill that void. So I think I'm hoping that as beneficial as this process I anticipate will be for us as a school district, I'm hoping that it will be beneficial for them as a PTO as well. Time will tell, I guess.
So is there anything else about this goal? Mrs. Kelly, do you have any comments about the goal?
I do not. I'm happily listening in. Thank you for doing all that research, Tony. That was some really interesting stuff. I could only wish we could have that much parent involvement. I know that's not really realistic, but still, it was interesting to hear that. Also, I wanted to apologize for not being there tonight, guys. I would have loved to have been there, but my kids are trying to kill us with their food. I decided not to spread it to you.
Better that everybody's healthy, and I'm glad that you're online. Should I just ask one question as a newbie? So do you do regular updates on goals once we have these approved? Is this like a quarterly or semi-annual thing? Or how does that how does that work?
So it it sort of depends on the goal. That was part of the deliberate thinking last year about informational presentations during meetings was that people were getting updates on, you know, work that we were doing with the strategy, work we were doing with the specific goals and so on and so forth, so that you were seeing it ongoing all year long and not, hey, it's time to write the superintendent's evaluation. Here's about 75 documents you can review before you, you know, do the write-up. And and you got to hear directly from the people engaging in the work day-to-day and ask questions of the people who are actually hands-on doing the heavy lift every single day. We will still do that, but in pre-recorded informational-type presentations that I'll share out with the committee that you can look at, you know, at your leisure and out to the community as well, so that they can look at and stay up to date, again, when it's convenient for them to sit down and watch a a video. But, yes, there will be updates, like, you you can see some of the artifacts that will come might be in the form of presentations. You know, I can potentially be giving you some updates in the context of a superintendent report, that the team had a multi-district, cross-district meeting a week ago. We're on target. This is the work that we're doing. The surveys or the focus groups are being scheduled. There'll be more information. That that sort of kind of ongoing just keeping you in the know with what we're doing.
I appreciate it. It's it's very interesting. You know, my comparison is having been a liaison from the Finance Committee and watching meetings, but not necessarily being in the email chain or closely reading goal documents or that kind of thing. So it it's difficult as a casual observer to relate when the math teacher comes in and talks about the curriculum to a goal that was established five or six months ago, you know what I mean? But as a committee member, it's becoming very apparent to me that I need to start collecting, connecting those dots.
So one other thing that I you know, appreciated in the in the the feedback that you gave to me, I think, maybe when we met in August, the notion of simplifying the language of a goal for the for the general public, right? And I explained to you, I kind of have to write these goals in a certain way so that they're time-measured and they're, you know. I will be now, assuming that this goal is approved tonight, I will be creating sort of a one-page overview with the actual language of the goal, but a simplified version of, well, what does this mean? Well, this means
Yep.
that we're going to participate in in this program with the Department of Ed, and we're going to work toward enhancing family engagement. Or the, you know, I simplify to explain what it is we're doing with the student learning piece or the professional practice goal, so that there'll be sort of that simplified translation, if you will. And then, again, that will all be in one document, and that will get posted on the website, too. So thank you for that thought.
Yeah, thank you. That's great.
Okay. If we are set, we could have a motion to approve the district improvement goal concerning family engagement.
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
All right, and a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. School and Brini?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Arshamo?
Yes. Terrific. Thank you for all your revamping and for everybody's thoughtful comments, and
Thank you.
There we go. So now we're on to committee reports. And since we now just do this in one lump report, we'll we'll go from from person to person. I'll start. Mrs. Kelly, have you any reports?
Unfortunately, no. I have no reports to give.
All right, then. And then, Mr. Beardmore, have you any reports?
I do. So the Capital Planning Committee met on the 26th. It was largely an organizational meeting. Mr. Alonso was elected chair. Mr. Passios remains vice chair, and I was elected clerk. And we will be meeting for our regular meetings on a weekly basis, starting on the 17th of October. And I anticipate that that will go, we will basically review all of the submissions together at that date and then start the week following that with regular department presentations. We're going to be meeting, it looks like four times monthly, rotating between Mondays and Wednesdays. So because Capital Planning Committee involves a select board member, a planning board member, a school committee member, and a finance committee member, you've just eaten up Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. So we meet on the first and third Wednesdays. The planning board meets on the second and fourth Mondays. So we're going to go into the holes, basically, from those dates. And so you'll you'll get me every Wednesday and every other Monday on some committee meeting. So that's how it'll work. And I, the the plan right now is to meet in the Ritter, but I think there may even be a scheduling issue still to work through there with the with the Board of Health, so I assume that's being worked on. But that that's basically the the gist. There was interest in prioritizing, I think that the thinking was DPW was always the biggest in terms of capital plan requests, followed by public safety, followed by schools. So we'll be in the first half, but late October, early November is what I imagine, and the town manager will be reaching out to you if she hasn't already to nail down a date and time specific. The High School Advisory Board met on the 29th. It was our first meeting. We reviewed the school improvement program that we saw today and approved today. We got an initial look at MCAS results. It was a limited look because you can't see the state comparisons, or at least at that time, we couldn't.
Well, really, all the data is really embargoed until until it's, you know, approved for release.
So
So with that in mind, I won't be saying much.
We didn't see anything.
I think the, I think what we saw was public. It was a public meeting.
Yep. There's some limited information that they can share.
And there was, you know, it was a good news, bad news kind of report. There are, you know, some some successes and some shortcomings that I, but the shortcomings are difficult without the state comparison, right? Particularly coming out of COVID.
Yeah.
You know, all of the numbers are not stellar, so it's kind of, OK. You know, how much are we lagging relative to everybody else lagging, so to speak?
So just a preview on that. There was a conference call a week ago with the state, and they went over some of the the state trends that they were seeing. Statewide, the trend is that there was some improvement overall in math, some improvement overall in science, and still some delay in improvement in terms of ELA, mostly focused in the area of early literacy. I'll have more to say on that next week. But it it was interesting, and I have some data that they shared, not not test result-specific, but some other interesting data that I'll share with everybody when we meet again next meeting.
Interesting, and I can't remember the term, growth number or something. There's a there's a number that
Student growth, yep.
The student growth number, and those numbers actually looked quite encouraging in the high school, which, you know, I was glad to see. So then we, you know, kind of had a an open discussion amongst the faculty members that were there just about school reopening and seen things seem to be generally very positive, you know, sort of. It was an interesting It was an interesting conversation because it's sort of like post-COVID. On the other hand, in the week and a half prior to the meeting, the high school had 12 faculty members out with sickness.
They lagged a little bit behind the primary school who dealt with that about a week, week and a half ahead of them.
Yeah. So we've had some serious, and it's students too, I know. But so, and I asked the question, like, how are we dealing with, you know, my kid was out for a week, you know, like, how are we dealing with it? And the answer was, well, we're kind of old hat at this, right? Like, we get it. Everybody kind of understands. And it doesn't seem to be too much stress about it, for whatever reason. I'm not stressed with, that was communicated in that room. I'm sure it may be different in your office, but nevertheless, it was a very positive meeting.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Schoenbrini, do you have any reports?
I do. The first thing is, the middle school met at their normal time, but it was not by Zoom for the first time since I've been on it, and it was during the middle of the day. So I'm going to try to figure out, to answer the question you sent me by email, I'll try to get a schedule and figure it out. I don't want them to change anything to accommodate me. I feel that's really unfair and imposing. But if they were meeting by Zoom anyway, then I could do that. But it was not feasible for me to get back.
Sure. You should ask Mr. Santri to do a hybrid meeting.
A what?
A hybrid meeting.
Hybrid meeting.
I don't want to make him do any more work. I really don't.
I think we can probably try to figure out some solution, so stay tuned.
Okay. So I did not attend that meeting. I did attend the most recent PTO meeting, and the meeting focused a lot on the issue that they brought before us with the logo. The president, I think she's the president or the vice president of the PTO, she knows everybody in the universe and like has a connection. So like, there was an issue at the primary school with insufficient sand in the sandbox. Done, taken care of. There was an issue for trying to get somebody, a vendor for t-shirts and stuff, done, taken care of. So they are, I feel like they are really on a roll. I also feel like they are the most thoughtful people. So like, I'm just taking notes. They're really, really good, so they're on a tight ship.
Excellent.
They are awesome people. They really are.
I have a report from Brian that the athletic advisory group met and approved the fundraiser for Miles for Miles for the cross-country team. And he is on the elementary advisory council, can't make tomorrow's meeting, so I will do so. So I'll fill in there. For myself, FinCom, my usual very efficient scraps of paper, I did not bring with me. So, you know, you would think you'd write it in a notebook, but I always just write it on the agenda. It's not in the pile. But from what I can remember, and feel free if I forget anything of great importance, the town financial director said that she was able to talk to their financial advisors and they were going to be coming to talk about how to figure out how much debt and to set up. A lot of the work this summer has focused on what the debt capacity is, particularly looking at the municipal building committee and knowing that Turkey Hill is sitting there. The debt capacity has been a major point of conversation. So she has found a consultant that will come help discuss that. And they also went through the town meeting warrant articles and talked about things that had financial impact and things that didn't and such, but they will be revisiting those at the public hearing coming up. And Mr. Beardmore said goodbye. And that was very nice, that very nice statement made upon leaving FinCom.
Thank you.
So, and your work there was very much appreciated by them and by everybody else, for sure.
It was a great opportunity and I had a lot of fun.
I always say, if you want to know about how the town works, sit in on FinCom. And it is not a job I would ever in a million years take, but it would just make my head spin. But I have learned so much about how this town works just by being the liaison to FinCom.
Coincidentally, there are two vacancies on the FinCom.
Yes, and there are two vacancies. If anybody would like to jump in, they need some help.
They do.
So, and particularly since quorum is based on the size of the committee is supposed to be. So although there are five members, the quorum is not three, it is four, so.
Oh, man, that's tough.
That gets tricky. That gets tricky. So that's what I have for reports. Are there any public comments? If you are on Zoom and wish to comment, if you can put your hand up. There isn't anybody that we can't see, is there?
No.
No. Okay, then I see no public comments.
I'll offer one. Just as an FYI, the engineering firm that we've been working with on the AC project is due to have a cost estimate to us October 10th. We have been asked to attend the select board meeting on October 11th because we submitted that warrant article in case we were in need of some additional funding for that project. So I will provide you all an update via email when I get the cost estimate so that you have it before I'm presenting it to the select board. It's possible that we would not require any additional funding, and if that's the case, I'll notify the town manager that we're withdrawing the warrant, and I'll notify all of you as well, if that's the case.
And if anybody wishes to attend that meeting, I will be going with the superintendent, but we cannot have more than two of us there without calling a meeting and posting it. So if you think you would like to attend that meeting, please let me know by, let's see, there's a holiday.
Holiday, we would have to post on Thursday.
Yeah. So by tomorrow morning, if you think, if you think you might want to attend that meeting, if it's.
I will likely attend.
You will likely attend, so, and you saying no.
No.
And Laura?
I'm working that night, unfortunately. Sorry.
And I'll check with Brian, just to make sure. I'll send him a text this evening. And if we need to post, we will do so. Otherwise, we're on to topics for future discussion, and I did receive a communication from Mr. Jeffries that he would like to speak to us about the building committee and what they're, they have, I think, four different scenarios they're looking at. And I can make sure that is in your folder for the next meeting. I will probably ask Liz if she can set up that folder soon so I can drop it in because you may want to take a look at that, because some of those scenarios really are going to make major changes for some of our school programs, specifically extended day and the family program that Mrs. Gillette does.
I can drop that in tomorrow. I have a note to myself.
Okay. I'll send that over.
I'll share that with the committee.
If you don't have that, I'll send it over. I think most of the, off the top of my head, so you'd have to check, but I think most of the scenarios do include space for our ACE program, but not for extended day, meaning that extended day, we would have to make a decision on how to bring it into the school buildings, you know. So anyways, so that, he will be here to talk to us about that on the 19th. So is there anything else that we need to? We want to look at the strategy, the update on the strategy.
At the next meeting.
We keep pushing that back.
I wanted to make sure that goals were incorporated into the strategy as well, just for the historical capturing of all the work of the district. So now that everything's been approved, I'll make sure that everything translates into the strategy as well.
Okay, so we have that and whatever else is on that other piece of paper that I also don't have this evening.
The only other thing that I would mention, and I don't think that we need to get this into our second October meeting, the chair and I have been having an email discussion over the course of the last couple of weeks relating to the town's five-year fiscal forecast and how that relates to the staffing plan. I think that there's a meeting of the minds that needs to occur on that at some point, but our conversation has not fully developed, and I think that it's important that we do, Carol and I kind of get through that perhaps over the next couple of weeks and then determine if this warrants a committee discussion, perhaps in early November.
Yeah. Yeah. Because you don't send the staffing plan over to the town manager till later.
We typically present that to the school committee the second meeting in December and typically send it along to her right after that.
So November would be fine if we wanted to have a discussion about changing the format a bit, is what we're talking about. Okay. Anything else? No? All right, then, this may be a record, Tony.
This is a record.
Tony, the two and a half hours, well, no, we missed that, but, you know, it's not bad.
Not bad.
No, well, no, we didn't miss it, did we?
It's a record for me.
Yeah, it is a record for you, for sure. I would take a motion to adjourn at, yes.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Certainly.
Second.
All right, at 8:55. And a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenbrini?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.